Welcome, everyone. We are going to get started by calling this meeting, this study session, to order. And the topic today, school safety. Thank you for being here. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lester to start.
Excellent. Well, President Minor and governing board members, it's great to see you this afternoon for another study session. Our topic today is school safety. And we think it's very fitting, for a couple of reasons, that we haven't talked about it around this table much recently. And we're in the midst of this whole master facility plan on expenditure. And I think it's very fitting to talk about what schools look like? Have we done for school safety and security up until this point? What's our philosophy about school safety and security? And we've got some experts in the room that are going to lead us through their process. And so I'm going to take it over to Al Moore and Holly Williams to walk us through this study session. So Holly, it is all yours.
Thank you. So earlier this fall, we brought to you some plans for bond projects. And kind of those projects are, actually 11 of them, are school front office remodels with the idea of safety as our focus. So today, we're going to talk about that because we've had lots of lively debate about what should our schools look like when you enter? How secure should they look? How should they feel? What should be our focus on that? So Al and I have debated at length, and we have some ideas to share with you today, but we want your feedback on it. And so in the room with us, we have, of course, our Director of Operations, Todd Thor, and Ron Romo, our Director of Construction, who've also been debating with us. And Sue Gray, who waves, Sue. Sue is our architect partner, who is designing these schools. So she's here to listen to your ideas. Tonight, she wants to gather the ideas, and then she'll go back to design the offices for each of these schools. And by the end of this presentation, I have the list to show you, the exact schools, and you'll understand why one answer doesn't fit for everybody, once you see the list of schools. So it's more tonight about developing a philosophy around school safety and design, less about, I want this on every campus, because it won't work on every campus. And we'll talk a little bit about it. And please stop us at any time if you have questions, and Al and I are going to kind of bounce back. So when we talk about school design, there's an idea of crime prevention through environmental design, that you can control some of the security features by controlling the environment. And the idea is that you use these concepts of natural surveillance, access control, the image, and the territorial reinforcement. And I'll point some of them out as we go through this. But the idea is that this is a, in Sue's world, this is a thing that designers and architects pay attention to, is that you can design for safety features, and maybe not even know that you've created those things. But you should pay attention to the features as you think about how we are getting ready to remodel offices. And I included the picture of Sandy Hook there. That's the new Sandy Hook, so that you can see that it's not a locked-down, no-windowed place, even though they had great tragedy there. That they kept in mind that the aesthetics and some of the features in this crime prevention through environmental design is focused in the Sandy Hook design. They have what, Scott, would you tell me? It's called a virtual moat around it. So they have a safety perimeter around it that you wouldn't even know it to look at it, but it's a very safe school. As we think about this, though, before we get going, the Safety Committee has had quite a bit of conversation around how do we balance school safety and wellness? Because it's not just about the right hand of this graph, which is deter, detect, delay, and defend, but rather, how are we paying attention to engagement and intervention, bullying prevention, and all of those things over there, counseling, our SEI things? How are we balancing that out when we think about keeping kids safe? You know, what we learned in our parent engagement about the master plan is, when you said, "Are our schools safe?" as a question to the parents, in the small groups, safety meant different things to them. It didn't mean fences and doors locked. It meant, how do they feel about being on campus? It meant, are the computers safe? It meant something different to everybody. And that was an eye-opener, I think, for Scott and I both, to say, oh, what we think safety is, people have a different definition of that.
And I think the kids redefine safety as well, as they've had groups of students talk about, like, master plan in the high schools. And they talk a lot about wanting to create community and get to know each other. I think they see safety in that understanding of each other, as opposed to lock-in glass and fence and all that kind of thing. Same message there, right? So that psychological impact and how they deal with each other is a factor in this conversation.
I think Danielle helped me. Danielle from Mountain View here helped me on both of the student activities over Mesa High and Mountain View. I think you can say this, too, with good authority, but the students very much felt that the campus is safe now. They wanted to be safer through social interaction. Saying that right? So that was important.
But they always said that there needed to be a camera, because there's always going to be some troublemaker that's going to cause a problem once in a while.
The kids at Mountain View would like us to have put in a parking structure with a social porch on top, that adults don't go in, but they'll put a camera so we can keep an eye on them. That's how they like it. So, I mean, they designed it and built it for us.
Did you tell them it wasn't going to happen?
No, this was dreaming, Danielle. This was dreaming.
Like, having it at my house is called a basement.
I'd have shut that down. It's a good thing I wasn't in the city.
Marcie, you shared an article with us today that kind of lives in this world, right? About how do you balance the idea of keeping kids safe and the psychological consequences of that? And Marcie shared an article with us today around lockdown drills, and how do we practice these things, and what impact does that have on students? So I'm going to let Al talk about that a little bit, because it's a big debate that's happening in the world.
This has been a topic of discussion for years, on whether or not lockdown drills, whether or not they should be announced or unannounced. So I've met with, in trainings, I've met with my colleagues, Gilbert and Chandler. We all agree they should be unannounced, but they don't all do unannounced. We do, several other districts do. The police department supports an unannounced drill, because you always tell them, it's a drill, and then all of a sudden, we have a real thing. They're going to freak out when they don't hear the word "drill." So we just decided years ago that we were going to do unannounced drills. We tell them ahead of time, you're going to have drills. We have, the ADE requires us to do four drills a year. They require one of those to be when the students are outside the classroom during recess. We tell them at the beginning of the year, we're going to have four drills minimum this year, so it should be expectation. Hope that reduces the anxiety. One of the things in this article talks about, some districts in other states were doing drills with simunitions, with wax bullets and everything. I'm like, holy cow, we would never do anything like that. So we don't do any kind of reenactments. We don't yell and scream in there. When we do a lockdown drill, especially at the elementary schools, I emphasize to my guys, let's get these over with as soon as possible. Roll within 10 minutes. Just really want to just get them used to the fact that, have these drills, they place, the lights go off, stay quiet. Check a few doors to make sure that nobody forgot an unlocked door, and then send notification.
And Al, we've really worked at coaching our principals to make quick communication. I mean, some communicate with the automatic messenger the moment that they go into a drill. So there's this notion of time passes, kids are on their phones in the classroom. So I don't think we're perfect at that yet, but we've really encouraged schools, send out the communication when it happens.
Yes. And I would support, the minute we announce the drill, send the message. It doesn't take them that long, or get text messages. Yeah, so I mean, it's a good debate. We will continue to talk about this in our safety meetings and listen to other people's opinions and experts' opinions. We certainly don't want to traumatize these kids. I will tell you that I personally sat in on classrooms. The most recent one was a third grade class at Eisenhower. I wanted to see what happened in the classroom, and the kids didn't seem stressed out. The lights went off, the kids went in the corner very orderly, they were quiet.
What about kids who have sensitivity to disruption like that, thrive on routine? We've got a number of students, and that number seems to be growing. And I'm really worried about the kids who don't understand what's happening, and those who may be very stressed because of the situation.
So for the last, about a year and a half, I finished last year, but it took me about a year and a half to touch every school. But I went to every single staff meetings, I did a briefing on our protocols. And one of the things I emphasized, and I continue to emphasize with new employees, is students are going to follow our lead. If we stress out, they're going to stress out. If we stay calm, they're going to stay calm. When the lockdown drill is announced, it's announced over the intercom. It's not sirens and lights or anything like that. So really, I think it's up to the teacher to stay calm and explain to their kids what's going on. And in that third grade class that I sat in, that's exactly what she did, very calm about it as well. So I think that's the P is, making sure that our staff realizes these kids are going to react how we react.
But Mrs. Hutchinson, I appreciate your thoughts on that. That just brings a greater awareness to us, that we are going to conduct unannounced drills, and maybe it's appropriate to do, you know, training with those teachers in those unique environments to learn about certain things that they might be able to do to minimize, you know, a student feeling a lot of sorts, because it's not a thing that they've ever... We have to work at that.
Yeah, I'm also really concerned about kids that are suffering from trauma. I mean, this is something, let's be real about what's happening to our kids. Our kids are not living in the Ozzy and the Green World anymore. That was a TV show in Pittsburgh. But I'm really worried about kids that are suffering from trauma. And it frightens me.
Maybe Mrs. Scott can share with us. Could you share a little bit, Theresa, with us, what Leilani does with trauma-informed teaching with groups of teachers?
We do a lot of professional trauma. ...go through a very good... And you're right, those students that tend to read mail or walk in down the classroom have a protection. Usually, we have plans that we create for them, but there is... We have headphones, so the teachers know ahead of time. Headphones are important.
There are accommodations.
We have, I would add, we have a parent for every tired child. There's how the foster... There's a lot of planning goes around. We work closely to know when all of those drills...
And we have many, many staffs. I want to maybe you can speak to some of the schools that have trained in trauma-informed care. Many of our full staffs have that training also.
Yes. And a key to all of this is, if teachers can practice with their students when it's a drill, then when it's an emergency and it's not a drill, it's the real thing, the students will have practiced it enough that they can just go into the routine. Because what we don't want to create is a situation where they always know when it's a practice, and then when it's the real thing, everyone freaks out, because it's the real thing, because I didn't know ahead of time that this was going to happen. So the idea is to let the sensitive students know ahead of time when it's a drill, but at some point during the year, they do do it without telling them ahead of time, because the last thing we want is to be in an emergency situation and have, like, everybody freak out, because we didn't know ahead of time this was coming, so this has got to be the real thing. So yes, training and practicing, but gradual release, that as the year goes on, we do practice some that are not advertised ahead of time, so that we know what that reaction's going to be when it's the real thing, and we can still be prepared for it. And we would hope that it's never the real thing, but we want to be prepared for that as well, when it happens unannounced.
I would, I don't want to take anybody's... Now, I'd really like to talk to you about this, just to use my mind, because I'm wondering if this is really... There's questions I have that I'd like to ask you, as people respect you, and you've done the training. So you've got a real handle on this. I'd really like to talk to you about this, why you're kind of aware of it.
That'd be awesome. I would like to make one comment in this article. It talks about whether or not this is effective. But I was told by law enforcement after Sandy Hook, they did a lockdown drill about a week prior to that incident, and they saw that lockdown drill probably saved lives because that suspect was actually walking down the hallway, battling doors. And because they were quiet and the lights were off, he thought those wounds were in there. Finally heard kids inside one of them, that's when he broke into that room. I was told by Homeland Security, that was a substitute teacher who never got lockdown protocols. So just that example alone tells me that there's value to doing these drills.
I mean, I did them at Red Mountain all the time, their students. And it went along, as you said earlier, I mean, you know, it's follow you. And it's all about the teacher, the training, and the report that they have with their students. But I'd like to talk to you about it, because I didn't understand that. Never had time to when we were teaching.
So just a reminder of the things that we've done so far, as, you know, over the past several years. Al and his team and the security, the construction department have made some significant improvements on our campuses. All the protocols have been updated, using Mesa Premier as our helpers on that in those planning sessions. Classrooms remain locked in school and seat session. We, two, one of those D's on that side, which is to... It's going to be hard to say. To deter, to slow down, right? To slow down somebody from being able to access a classroom. But there are new emergency management posters in place, that they got rid of those flip charts. Now we have a standardized symbol. So there's one wall even. So that's standardized across the district. They all look the same, no matter where you go. We've got cameras increased, with increased coverage on all sites, and we're even missponding, increasing those numbers more.
Yes, our, well, our elementary schools will have pretty close to 20. Our junior highs have a number of 40s, and our high schools are getting close to about 100.
And Al, these are monitored not only by district security, but also, schools monitor them as well, if they have some flexible resources to do so.
That's correct. They can log, the front office clerks can log on, and a lot, when I walk into schools, a lot of times, one of the clerks actually has the cameras up, constantly monitoring. My dispatcher monitors them during the day. I have somebody at night. The high schools, a lot of the high schools have signed dispatcher, there's nothing to monitor.
Now, you've been around here quite a while. Well, that makes you sound really old, but you've been around here for a few years. Do you believe cameras deter? I mean, is this a good move for us to make, to just deter bad behavior?
Absolutely. The best investment. A lot of principals tell me that kids think there's cameras everywhere. Even when there's hallways that don't have cameras. Like, a lot of our elementary schools, we don't have a lot of interior cameras, because behavior isn't much of a factor there. But all the principals have to do is say, look, Johnny, you know we have cameras on these campuses. Boom, they get a confession. And we have actually experienced video footage of people coming onto our campus, looking up at a camera.
I think we're seeing a huge decrease in graffiti.
Graffiti, criminal damage, burglaries, almost nonexistent.
When I first come to work, a couple years ago, that was about $1 million dollars.
We also, you know, the perimeter fencing we have, to create one point of entry to schools. And many of our school offices in the first bond, this last bond, excuse me, were remodeled to control access. So we put in doors where we could, buzzer doors, created windows that can close quickly and secure offices. And so we kind of did the ones that were the hanging fruit, right?
There were about eight schools that, literally, when you walk in the front door of the school, we're going to, we have a picture of one of them, walk in, and you had to exit the hallway to get to the office. So we had strangers off the street just walking into our classes.
We've secured those.
I have a question about your posters, your emergency posters. Are those a standard for all school districts, or is that something unique to our school district? And what they say on it is what I...
So I would like to say that I invented that. I actually copied that from the Sandy Hook Foundation. But a lot of the, we changed some of the icons on it to more relevant to our district. So I kind of recreated it. There's had a lot more things on there that I thought weren't needed. Didn't really apply, yeah.
I read it earlier in the year, and I remember there was some thing, maybe it's been changed since, but some things that I thought didn't apply even in Arizona. I don't know if that's, I'm just naive. I don't realize those things apply.
Is there something about a tornado or something like that?
Yeah.
We get tornadoes.
I guess we could get a big monsoon.
Yeah. And when we talked about that, we decided to leave those on there, just because, even though they're rare, it is possible.
Okay.
There actually is a fault line in Evans, I agree.
I'd press for point that out.
Are you a geologist as well?
In my part-time job.
These single pages, and I talked about this for some time last year, before we distributed them to every classroom in every school. We used to have flip charts, and you maybe have seen some of those hanging on doors. And our efforts were to go away from the flip chart, because in an emergency, who's going to flip through 17 pages of a flip chart to find what you do in a lockdown? This has the major expectations, and if you had to, you could just refer to it and say, that's what we're going to do, and you don't have to have a flip chart. So I'm sure that they still exist out there, Al, and you probably see them and you probably say, we don't have those anymore.
Actually, when I showed these to Gilbert and Chandler, they're going to... Chandler and their El Hambra are actually using the exact same, although they're changing these.
Oh, that's flattering.
So today, as we look at these slides, what I would really ask you to think about is, what do we want our schools to look and feel like, from a safety perspective? So, you know what we've done so far, and we're getting ready to spend some more money on this. And before we spend money, I don't, I have a fear that we will do something, and then we will, you know, five years from now, say, why did we do that? Why did we do that? So I'm trying to be thoughtful about that, but I would like to hear from you about what works, what doesn't, what you think we should be focusing on when we do these models. And so we're just going to walk through some current pictures of some current lobbies, not necessarily the ones that we plan on doing. But Al's going to point out some of the challenges with them, as we go through them, so you can kind of see. And then if you know of challenges with these lobbies, please join in, because that's what this is, for the next few minutes here, is designed for you. And then I'll show you some designs, what's out there in the world, what's being designed in other school districts in Arizona, so you can kind of see what's going on, okay?
And a short time ago, Holly set me straight. And she said, don't look at, don't begin to build a safety philosophy by first thinking about cost. Try to look at it from the standpoint of what looks right, feels right, what are the hurdles in a particular design, and then we'll think about the cost after we figure out our philosophical position. And she really turned that to...
We've turned down, if you turn down a few lights, it's hard.
Yeah, it's really hard to see this.
It's not about, no, it's not that we're going to blow the budget on these. But the idea is that with our partners, our architect partners and designers, we'll look for ways to incorporate cost-effective design that meets the philosophy that we set. So start talking about Hale.
So at, most of our campuses, the biggest challenge when we were trying to create one point of entry was funneling everybody into the front office, and then figuring out a way for them to get into the campus. So what we had to do is bring the fences out, the way you see them here at Hale. And then in a lot of the schools, we had to cut in a secondary door, so that when they come in, they check in, and then they go out the other door. So I can't remember here, if it's the doors on this side or this side, but let's just...
I like your pointer, Al. I like your pointer.
You like that? So you'd walk in, on most of them, we have a buzzer door lock on the secondary door, so that you can't just do a button hook and get into the campus. Again, aesthetically, maybe it isn't as nice as looking, but it works, as far as it gets us into the front door. There's accountability.
So I've looked at these campuses from, I kind of, you know, arrived at the district after the fencing went up, and I completely respect what Al has done and how he's had to do it. But I think we also, it is frustrating to have the front of the school be kind of nothing but fence, right? And then this little chute to get through. So, you know, this is the balancing act. How do we, how can we readdress some of these? You know, the quick answer was get the fences up and get the campuses secure. The longer conversation is, can we make some slight changes to some of that front? And maybe the fence doesn't have to be quite as prominent in walking up to the school.
And you should know that when we were doing the superintendent search pamphlet, remember you said, can you take the fence out of there? We chuckled, because that's what our campuses look like, you know? So you said, take that out of there.
But that's us.
That's what it looks like.
Well, one of the challenges, I know this is going to come up, so I'm probably jumping ahead, but it's hard to find offices in some schools, and I'm wondering...
We're going to get to that.
Okay. You're absolutely right. So I'm glad you went there, because one of the design things I told you about was territorial design, right? And what the idea is, is that you should use your landscaping and sidewalks to guide you. Think about how many planter boxes we have put to make the fronts of schools look beautiful, but they cut the sidewalk up, so there's no clear path to go to the office, in many cases.
A big giant sign.
Well, I've got some examples of that, too. So yes, thank you for going there. So that's for sure. But like Hale here, that's a great example, right? If you didn't see the cattle chute getting into the door, you might not know that's the front office, right?
This is one of the better ones.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, once you are in the office, yes, to get onto main campus, you have to be buzzed in, but that's just a little swing gate back there that lets you right back into on the right-hand side. So there's not much stopping you, you're getting in. Westwood.
So Westwood is wide open. When you walk in the front door, Clark sits here, but if you've been to Westwood, you know that there's a lot of landscape there, and a lot of, when it gets crowded in there, it'd be very easy for somebody to walk straight into here to go to campus. Straight down this hallway here, and there's a couple different ways you can get into campus without even...
And then Clark sits there, but with your back to the door.
That's right.
So when we walked this a few years ago, you made a comment that Westwood was one of the easier ones to pick, because there is so much landscape, that it would be easy to build some type of reading entry there. It would stop people from going on without getting close to it.
We've done a nice job of labeling the office, the outside, you can tell where you're going, pull up to Westwood. You know where you're going, but the inside, it's a little more. So we have some hodgepots. That's why one answer doesn't fit for everybody.
I mean, because the remodel was so recent, and now we have to go back. So this whole project is going to move in. I hope so.
Yeah.
Remodel addressed the exterior, did not.
That's right. We did the office, how many years ago? It's been a long time. Fifteen years ago, twenty, maybe, when we did the office? Yeah.
Well, when we did the remodel a couple of years ago, they did the exterior a little bit.
Yeah. So this is Pomeroi. Again, the landscaping doesn't lead you to the front door, right?
So you would think that's the front door, right? I go up to that. I still go up to that.
And Holly, from your conversation, it's hard when you enter from the parking lot. The front door is actually over that fence and planter box to the left.
Yeah, the parking lot's back here. So you would have to walk way around this planter. It doesn't direct you to the front.
It doesn't direct you to the door. Through landscaping and other. And then once you're in, you know, it's an insecure lot.
Poston is kind of like Westwood. You walk in, the front door, the clerks are all on the right. You can either go straight ahead and get into campus. If you go left, this is the principal's office and some clerks are over here. And you can actually get to the nurse's office.
If you remember, if you've been to Poston, you know their entrance also kind of sits on the side of the building.
And you do see those kind of lobbies, but there's that, you can't go, you can maybe walk in, but you can't go past that. So you check in with the office. So that's where you, it's not always unusual to have it off to the side. But the idea that you can't keep going is what you got to try to address.
Redbird, so that door is right on the other side of this pillar. And I think we talked about the fact that back when we did the fencing, it would have been nice to cut a door right here. It made this a nice entryway. It would have closed this off and made the front door, the exit door, the campus. Fence back here, a secondary door to the left of the door. And the other thing about Redbird is these windows, they're not see-through. They're like bathroom windows, I call them. So you can't see, you cannot see outside at all until somebody's inside.
One of the things we want you to think about is, the two things that I'd like to think about as part of our philosophy is the fact that you can see who's coming and that you can secure it quickly. It'd be two things I would recommend that we try to design around. That the idea that the people in the office can see who's coming out of it. And that way, they know, uh-oh, something's bad about to happen. And I can, and then I can quickly secure wherever we are.
That really makes a good point that I should have thought about. And that is, you see so many that are closed off, but that makes the people inside more vulnerable, in my opinion, because there's so many places they can hide to get in where nobody can see them.
That's right.
I really haven't.
Many years ago, the, all the circle K's and the 7-Elevens, they were getting robbed all the time because they had their whole front closed off with signs and such. So you couldn't see the clerk and the clerk couldn't see out. There was a big push and working with the police department to try to clear those windows, reposition the clerk so that they could see the parking lot. That way, the bad guy sees, or he's less likely to actually go in. It changes out or clerk will see danger coming and then.
Well, that's good news because I like more.
This is Field Elementary.
So when you walk into Field, you can actually, I wish this picture was in the back because you can actually go left into the nurse's office and out into campus. Or you can go right. Principal's office is way over here, right down the hallway, and you're into campus. If the clerk is distracted, boom, you're in. This would be a pretty easy one to fix because I was thinking about this one. We could build some type of a barrier here. Two doors on each side of this. It's a pretty basic front.
The other thing we'd like to try to get away from is, when we do let parents in, you don't have to walk them through mailrooms and, you know, back conference rooms or back.
Nurses' offices.
Yeah, right? That is, that is, on many of our campuses, including Field, that's what you do. You walk by mailboxes and spaces where teachers gather. You hope you maybe could avoid doing that.
Well, you could think about the original design. People would check into the office, walk back out and just walk onto campus to go wherever they were going because there were no fences. So we created a whole new traffic pattern by funneling people to the office. But those offices don't always have a way to get out on campus without technically coming back out the front. And that's where we end up with some of the fences right up on the front of the campus.
Irving is another one. As you can see, you have to walk up visual, be able to see who's coming. Then the door to get into campus is just to the right. You walk in, you have several doors you can go through.
Bombview, you know, one of my favorites.
Yeah, but you know, Bombview is kind of set up in a way nice because they already have the big windows here. We just have to construct some type of reading area and barrier here. But this, if we set up these clerks the right way and they couldn't see the danger. So there are a lot of windows there.
Unfortunately, the doors are kind of the, kind of the center of what they'd be looking out at if you wanted to see the parking lot. So it's, you're right, the window's out, but then the doors are completely blocking around the very entrance, somebody might come up through.
This picture will show it, but we did add a ramp to the front doors this year. So this past year, there's been a ramp to get in and out.
And that was so we could.
We changed the fencing.
Well, the issue was the fencing was really out around the parking lot and never used. So the campus was really never secured like the other campuses. So once you move the fencing back between the buildings, now you create new traffic patterns. That's why we had to build a ramp up to the front office because you couldn't use other ramps.
Fences were originally there to keep the students.
Yeah. It wasn't about, yeah, exactly.
Different, different time.
Ishikawa is one of those ones we had to walk to the back to get out.
Plus, there's no direct line to get to.
Beautiful turf, but not a direct path.
So these, Bush is one of the schools that we had to, where I told you you had to exit the hallway. So before, these doors weren't here. So when you walk in the front door, you literally had to go through this door to get to the office. People were just walking right into our. We've had persons stolen from classrooms very recently. So this was kind of a simple fix. All we did was we put in a set of double doors with a buzzer. So they, instead of a window here, we took the window out and put in a pull-down security shutter. So when they're locked, this is. And this also has a buzzer lock. So people come in again, and they either get buzzed into the office or they get buzzed in.
Well, I have a question about this one. And I'm really familiar with this at grandchildren. When I come in, when I come into that, it feels very unfriendly, very closed in. And you feel like you're going into a prison. And to me, that looks like you, and I'm not being critical, I really am not. I just want, this is an honest question. There's a lot of things that the person behind that wall can't see. So I'm wondering, is there a way to make that feel friendly? If that's the design we need to go to? And I see it's an easy fix with that one. I understand that. Is there a way to make that feel?
Well, I think one way would be to cut this out, put in all glass.
That would be.
Glass windows and just open it up.
Well, and I, we have several, like, lots of.
Redmond Ranch Elementary.
A lot of them have this. I've heard the secretaries joke about how they like, you know, had to shoot.
Who's pulling down?
Who's pulling down the bank? Like, when the shooter's in, who are they sacrificing to protect the rest of them? Really that safe? Unless this happens on another place, but if it comes in the front door.
I would tell you, though, that overhead door, they demonstrated it to me. It comes down quickly and it gets latched quickly. If we need a mechanism to be able, to be able to secure the area. Well, there's got to be some kind of door and mechanism that.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying.
It's going around your ankle because you're running, right? You know, just touch the ankle and it closes.
Well, it satisfies one thing. It can be secured quickly, but they can't see the danger coming. So it doesn't fit both pieces.
And it, and it looks uninvited.
There you go. Right, so that's, how do you feel when you enter, right?
Just so you know, there's a couple of the ones we had to replace. They had electric motors that shut it, but it took like two minutes. So we got rid of those. It just took two.
I am listening to what you're saying. I feel totally different about this because I've seen some different picture of what actual, what actual class. And the idea of how I see anything, I'm a kind of different thinker. I actually think it's almost fair for the, I see it as a transaction window. And I understand we don't do transactions. Let it meet you, greet you, feeling, have you gone and do what you need to do? Not coming there to be, something like that. But to actually have that glass, I think that's the worst thing for people to come up and watch you where you work. They're just kind of hanging out, they've got some kids and you're not doing your work. So like exposing that and just having it open and like. I understand the safety thing, but also look at the people in there. Like, who are people watching people work? Because that's what it is, is lobby work before going back in forward. That's kind of how I look at it. And of course, yeah, probably unfortunate things about the expense. Like, oh man, people see you, don't see you, got to fix, and you move on. And it's safe. I'm thinking maybe they'll change the color. Make it bright, make it cherry.
So these are the ones that you're talking about, Mrs. Sues. These are the ones we've done this last summer, Washington and Souza. They were very open. They didn't have that opportunity like Bush did with the hallway where you could just do the transaction window. They had desks out that people walked up to. So this was our solution. It does a couple of things. It allows for line of sight, people can see who's coming. It allows it to be pretty quickly secured. The doors aren't exactly what we'd like. We'd do a different design moving forward. And that was why we did two this year, to see what worked and what didn't. And the doors have to be shut like this and then secured.
See how they're open right here?
And they take out the counter space that we would prefer they don't take out. Because basically, that makes it unworkable space there. So we're going to redesign them moving forward. The design with the two will pull down for a transaction window.
I asked the staff at Souza how they like this. They're kind of kid about. Who's going to get hit? But they do that very popular type of humor. But they like the openness. They actually, the ladies like this. They think it's good, they think it's still inviting, it's still, and it is, it is still inviting. But they make, look how they make it so home. And the light is coming in. I think that's what really is nice about it, is that it's got the light.
We do have, you want to talk about film?
Sure, we did put the ballistic film on all this glass. So it is bullet resistant.
I know that, but when that window's open, that's.
That's right. So right now, it's a key. And they're getting ready to switch them out to a thumb lock, basically, that will, that they can close it and click it and it'll be locked. So they're getting ready to change those locks now.
I think it's important to point out here too, on these projects, that, and I guess this really came home to me when I was visiting LA. And Holly and I went to a conference about design. And we did one of the best school tours I've been on with LA Unified. And they have a master plan and they're working on these buildings. And what was interesting to me is when they, when they pick a campus to go work on, they pick it because of seismic activity. They say, if the building's going to fall down, those are the ones we got to fix first. So that's their reason. Yeah, pretty good criteria, but that's the reason they go and master plan that campus. But they don't say, okay, there's two buildings that are going to fall down and the other four are going to stay up. Their campuses are very similar to ours, the open, you know, campuses that we've built over the year. They say, okay, those two buildings have to come down. Now, school, we're going to master plan what your campus needs going forward. And they look at the whole campus. They don't just look at the two buildings that need to go down and the two, and put two more buildings up. They say, do those buildings still meet the educational needs of the students? And do we need to make changes? I bring that up here because in these offices, what we saw was a lot of dysfunction with the way things were laid out and how the traffic patterns occurred. So we didn't just put up this transactional counter. That was part of it. But for example, at Washington, they had that kind of fence in the middle of the door that we saw earlier at Hale, right? And so you kind of walked into the fence. But they had this window right next to it. And as you can kind of see in this picture, we took that and you can kind of see a light down there. You can't see it, but we cut out the window and made it a door. And we were able to move the fence off of the front entrance. So the front entrance opened up and you didn't walk into a gate anymore. And it just, and you still have this traffic flow where a parent can be buzzed through and now walk out onto the campus when it's appropriate. So you still maintained all the security. We were able to change the fencing a little bit. So we looked at it with more than just the, just trying to fix one little problem. We're trying to address the entire experience of how you interact with the office and through the office. At Souza, we saw that the front office was kind of dysfunctional. They had all these kind of like makeshifts pieces of furniture slapped around because that's what they had. And they had a desk here that they got out of surplus and a desk there that they got a surplus of all different kinds of furniture. So we redid the back countertops as well as creating that transactional counter. And oh, by the way, they had this one storage space that was completely useless. And with like this flip of a switch, we were able to turn that into an office that they're now able to use just by kind of putting in a wall and a door that was very inexpensive and reasonable. So there was a little bit more going on here than just the idea of the transaction counter. But we're trying to make the front office function better at the same time, not just be about how do we capture people in the lot.
Holly, knowing that we only have about twelve minutes left, let's make sure that we get to a spot where we can get some final.
Yep. Here's Taylor. This is the remodel for Taylor. Remember, we moved it from the center of campus to the exterior of campus there. I tell you, I don't know if you've talked to any Taylor parents or Mesa High parents. They think this is the best thing since life. This is super exciting. This is a great design. We are going to make a change here. That's a big pull-down door and nobody's strong enough to pull it down. So we're going to, we're going to alter that design this summer to make it a little easier. There'll be a transactional window and glass on the side. But it'll make it a little easier for it to secure. Because right now, that's a beast of a door.
And there also are windows on the other side that you don't see there. So they do.
Yes, they see what's coming.
Out under the parking lot.
Oh, I do have a picture. So now I want to just show you some examples of designs that are in our area. This is Queen Creek Middle School. You can see they have the transactional counter. They have windows that people can see, they can see who's coming into their lot. On that light idea that you were talking about.
And they have the four inches.
They have like a gap underneath, which is.
So you see glass all the way around and just a transactional gap.
Here's Cheyenne Traditional. This is another redesign. You can kind of see the picture on the bottom there of what it used to be. And then the one on top is what it is now. This is the idea of clearly calling out where the doors are. So at Cheyenne, you might have thought that that door on the left up there was the front of the school. But it was by putting that blue kind of metalwork around the front door. Now you've called it out and you put a clear signage. So this would be another feature that we would add to make sure that offices clearly know where you're going. Clearly know where you're going.
See, they used to have a sign, it's an office now.
It does look like the one on the left is.
I would have gone to the left, yeah.
So we can do better with signage and calling it out. Eight-way Polytechnic, again, the idea of a transaction window. Secure doors to get buzzed back in. A nice area for people to wait and/or be seen if needed.
Holly, I think maybe a real important part, even this one as well, that if we're going to have glass, in my opinion, they need to be able to see people coming. They need to be able to secure whatever that area is. And in a lockdown, they need to be able to retreat to a place of security. And maybe if you go back to the last one, Holly, it's maybe more appropriate, is the notion that that's probably a conference room or a workroom back there. So if they were in a lockdown, they would secure the glass. So if they were in a lockdown, they would secure the glass and go behind that door to be secure.
This design doesn't really have a way to secure the glass because it has that four-inch gap. Or six-inch.
Which is secure, like, I like that better.
Than a door?
Well, yeah. It's not a action, remember to do this. It's, yeah.
The only drawback with having a gap on the bottom is you can still shoot through it. And some of these that we are going to see, I think are 10-inch gaps. And I think a lot of kids could probably get through that. A lot of the shooters are.
Here's Kyrene. This is the, basically the design they, they employ in most of their schools. They do have the gap there too.
On the top end of the bottom.
On the top and the bottom, yeah. This is the idea of using the, the planter boxes in a smart way to lead you into the school as opposed to like block the path into a. So these are the schools that we scheduled for the summer. You can see the list there. And they have all different needs, right? All different places across.
Just say, isn't Eisenhower, is Eisenhower the school where you have to walk?
Uh huh.
It's like. Yeah, and it's like down to the office. I always think that's the one same, because I mean, I've passed 80 kids on my way to the office.
Yes, you have.
Like.
Kind of like what Taylor was. You got that.
Yeah, if it was an active shooter, they're already in the middle of your campus whether you did it or not.
Sue brought that up and I'm leaving.
This is just, this is just strictly for security. Other, other things you're going to do is completely separate.
That's exactly right. This is, this is, these are the schools that just need an office. They're not identified in any other way in the master plan yet.
Planter boxes? I like that a lot. When we think about multiple types of pieces of those planter boxes.
So like a school garden or? Yeah, okay. I know Madison is very big on that. Yes, I think that's.
Most schools have that, community gardening or something, but the, but the problem is.
You can actually put something until like the stuff grows out. Like, because I remember I've seen like, when we first started with one of. Johnson, Yori Johnson, even though it's in the middle campus, I remember for it to have aesthetics and kind of these things like on the side until the.
I, I just, I would just worry about it's taking the time and taking, taking some idiot.
Because it's on the outside, on the outside.
That's what I worry about. And you've got, you've got like.
Four-year homeless coming to call the, you know, like you've got people experiencing this.
Well, at least they've been. Something's going to trash it.
We got cameras on.
So we talked to you.
Know who it is.
So we talked to you. We've talked to you about the security film.
Sure, we, we, Washington and Susa are completely installed with the security film. We want to move forward with the, all the schools. If any, the concept is everywhere where there's a kid behind the glass, we want to be able to. Especially in the areas like the cafeteria is all glass. We have some classrooms that are all glass.
Starting with junior highs and high schools.
Yes. They're the most likely.
And then we've talked to you about the security alert beacons at Guerrero. That, that test is going well. We'd like to increase that.
Principal's here.
Yes.
Well.
And the intent, so they know the intent of the security beacons are what?
So in areas where it's hard to hear the announcement, like in the band room, the orchestra, the cafeteria, the playground, we put these blue strobe lights. And when there's a lockdown, they hit a button, the lights start blinking and that lets everybody know we're in lockdown. Because we get a lot of complaints from gym teachers and bandleaders that say, I didn't hear anything. So this will alleviate that. So we're moving forward with all the campuses.
And David, do you want to talk about the emergency notification system?
Sure, that's how we manage the security campus quickly. So we're looking at a system that will, you know, if people, Al, they'll push one button, send a text message, email, message to the phone, play an announcement with the intercom. And that, lockdown the school, or group of schools, or the entirety. We're looking at a system like that. That can also work with the blue lights.
Send the notification to the district also, so to Al's office, so that there's not. So when the principal puts the school into lockdown or is told by the police to put the school in a lockdown, they don't have six calls to make. The system takes care of it for them. And they can take care of the kids and the teachers in the way that they need to.
It also allows us to use multiple communication methods because I guarantee you when something goes wrong, it's going to happen at the most inconvenient time as far as being, you know, kids are being released to the bus or they're out in the playground or they're during lunch. It never happens when everybody's just in the classroom. So communicating with our staff who might be anywhere, it becomes a critical issue at that point because, you know, they don't carry, the one thing that everybody carries around now is their cell phone, right? If they're going to be next to a walkie-talkie, you don't know if they're going to be next to an intercom. But they're probably going to have their phone on. So all those communication methods, hopefully you get to everybody quickly.
So.
So.
Things have changed since I was a teacher, right now. So now, what do we have in the classroom? Shooter is already in. Shooter is the kid that's on your desk. What, what does a teacher do when their classroom door is locked? How do you get in that room? Shooter is already inside.
The emergency notification system is an app that the teacher can also press to notify people.
Are they doing an app or are they going to, you know, push a couple of bugs on the phone? Everybody, hey, I need help.
Or their desktop.
Their desktop.
Or their desktop. So it's, what, okay, wait, what, this can be hard.
Because, okay, a female teacher does not have their phone on their, it's in their purse.
But their desk phone and their lap, and their laptop. They're using, using.
Okay, so it's on the, it's on the phone.
TV on, TV on the phone.
On their phone, on their computer.
And their phone.
And their.
And their desktop.
Well, Marcia.
Phone, shooter, and, okay, got it.
But Marcia, aside from that moment of, of notifying through some electronic system, Al, you want to speak briefly on that when there is an altercation with a shooter, there are, are things that, that police tell you to do, that, that you flee. You, you know, if you hide, you flee and then you protect yourself. Do you want to talk briefly about that?
Well, because we've been talking about the shooter coming from the outside and we know that most shooters are already on campus.
Correct. Most, when you look back at the dynamics of a shooting, most of the kids that bring these guns in and their backpacks, they go to a bathroom and they suit up. Then they come out and then they start looking for targets. If, and there has been cases where they've been in the classroom, they'll take a classroom hostage. What we've taught our staff and we instructed them to teach the kids is to fight. If it's that kind of a situation, you're going to pick up a chair and just start chucking it at the guy.
But the protocol is the first thing you do is what, Al?
So it's, it's shelter in place, flee or fight.
So we're talking about front offices right now, but we'll come back with another conversation about, I'm seeing the idea of locked classrooms and how do we, what do we need to start to master plan these campuses? Are there ways to lock corridors? Are there ways to, to be different? But this first, this first level of planning that we're doing is around the offices. So I just want to do a quick touch base. Where are you with the ideas that they need to be able to see what's coming at them and be quickly secured? Yes, okay. From there then, are there any other big ideas that you'd like us to make sure that we incorporate into these designs? What's important to you?
Windows.
Windows are important, right?
And I know the windows will be more expensive because we've got to make sure that they're. It seems like visibility is really important, but light into the office, that those, that those workers in there have, have light. Because I'm thinking Guerrero, I mean, you don't have any light.
They don't, they don't have a window.
You don't have a window. And I'm wondering, you know, they don't, I'm, I'm thinking that, that situation is, is a good. That, that situation at Susa where the windows are on the side too. I mean, that's really, it's really visible. And I like the welcoming of, of the windows, of the protection. But I also like the landscape idea because I think the landscape idea could really, really work.
So paying attention to how people enter and making sure that we have some clear path.
And it's welcoming as well.
And welcoming as well.
And then be able to find a place.
And find a chair.
Know where it is.
And find the office.
And that may have something to do with desigmenting how. Sometimes you go on a camp, a campus and you can't tell, well, would be the most convenient place to park? I just want to run.
Right.
And maybe that, that gets, that's quickly remedied after the parents have been there possible. I know anybody who hasn't. I think Mesa High is a challenge.
Yeah, Mesa High is one of your huge challenges.
Huge challenge. So the reason.
Way harder to fix that one than.
So the reason why we're talking about this now is that simply changing the front office isn't in and of itself a wise use of our knowledge. Because we will change it to fit something that is not functional at our schools. And so we want to be able to go back with the architects to say, all right, if philosophically we believe this, let's get some drawings of exactly what you guys are talking about. And I, I think there's a balance in all that we do. I like Taylor. Taylor has, you know, somewhat of a structured front area when you get in. It's not, you know, a 30-foot wall of glass that there's countertops. And if we designed it in a way where maybe there's two down windows instead of one, then we can do something better. You know, so I would tell you, I'm not a fan of everything just being glass everywhere.
Yeah.
I, I think we can design beautiful things with openness, with the ability to see, the ability to lock down. And, and I don't know what, what you guys think. I like the Taylor environment. I think it's.
Hopping.
And realistically, cost is, as much as we want to say, it costs does matter. So if it's beautiful, but it's three times as much, then I want to live with less beautiful.
We get it.
And more.
I'm very, I'm very.
And more budget friendly.
I'm very cheap.
Yeah.
Well, I'm seeing two things. I mean, glass, glass, and it can mean light. But I think there's other things that actually create light, like there's. I know there are windows, but they were kind of like, so as you're saying, I think there's all. So I remember seeing like some overhead.
Light.
Yeah, type of things.
Lighting. Now we have.
We're just good lighting.
In a, in a, in an architect where this is, who can actually make illusions to you that create a field.
Okay.
So we'd like to probably, you know, with our architect here, Holly, do you envision us, you know, getting some designs of these schools, you know, trying to figure out cost of what something like this would look like, being able to share it with the, the board and saying, here's where we're headed?
Yes, very much so.
I need one more thing to, I heard then from Scott saying. Also, I think the board was supportive and that is to look at. Are we?
Or how to get to campus and.
Yeah. When campuses are originally built, you came in and then you could go out throughout the campus wherever now.
Or there are no fences?
Where, yeah, there were no fences now. Have you, have you discussed that? The traffic closed, like Scott was saying.
Yes.
Well, I think the Taylor example, like, there was no way to fix the office being in the middle of the campus. We tried that and you saw what happened. We had a cattle shoot with a dumpster and that's how you entered to the school. I mean, it was embarrassing and it wasn't appropriate for the kids. I mean, it looked, there was nothing but fence everywhere. So we had to move that, that, that office to a new location to create a new work, way of flowing through the campus and controlling access. So it's, sometimes it's not as simple. It's sometimes very simple and sometimes a little more complex how we're going to address those.
So I think we can continue this conversation because it is already wide after our. Move into session. So we have to re, I think we have to recess.
You're here.
Okay. So, Holly, favor?
Hi.